This conference will now be recorded.
Great, thank you. So, and Kevin, if you'll, I don't know if you can take it to, is this your full screen mode?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, so let's, uh, let's go back, we'll start with, we'll start with this. So, good evening, we appreciate folks who've joined this meeting. Uh, this is the final of our budget presentation for the proposed twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-one budget, uh, for the municipality of Norristown, and we're pleased to have the opportunity to share with you with really kind of an overview of where we are in the budget process. Uh, we have had prior to this, uh, three budget meetings, uh, two in the daytime, one in, in the afternoon around eight, afternoon around six thirty, as we're required to do by law, well, we, we made, uh, and typically do, we had those three, uh, but, but because of the situation around COVID, we wanted to add an additional meeting, which is this one. Uh, any information that anybody would like to find out about, uh, the budget and, and documents and presentations that were made to council and, uh, and to myself, uh, from department heads, all of that information is located on our website, uh, under the section that deals with the proposed, uh, twenty twenty-one budget. And so you can find a lot of detail there. Last night, the municipal council, um, authorized us to advertise, uh, the budget and that budget document advertisement will go up, uh, today or tomorrow after, after this presentation, uh, and will, will be advertised certainly on our website and, and the newspaper, um, uh, as well. And so if anybody has any information, uh, certainly feel free to contact us at info@pio.org or to call, uh, the municipal, uh, manager's office in administration, and, uh, we'll, we'll provide you with whatever information, uh, we can, uh, to assist you and give you more information. There's always a copy of the budget that's available to folks who want to, uh, stop by municipal hall and pick up one as well. So, um, let's get started with the process, Kevin, I'm, I'll, uh, I'll go from there. So, tonight, as I said, we'll give an overview of where we are, a little bit of where we are in twenty twenty, and also talk about what, where we are at this point in terms of making our point twenty twenty-one proposals. Um, after this, uh, we certainly want to give, uh, the opportunity for any questions or comments by the public in terms of what you hear, uh, related to this budget, and, uh, again, we'll do our best to, uh, answer any questions that you have. So I'll start off by saying that, uh, as we have in prior years, uh, prior to twenty twenty, uh, staff has done a really good job of holding, uh, 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 operations under budget, actually coming in under budget operationally. Uh, and, and, and we've done that thus far, uh, in twenty, in twenty twenty as well, even under the, um, circumstances of COVID, where that, where it's, the situation is actually required, uh, that we take some additional steps, uh, to provide for safety and equipment for, uh, personnel, uh, within the municipality and, and do, do some retrofitting of some of our operations to make sure that the public is, uh, safe too when, when they come to the building. But given all of that, we're still operating, uh, in, within budget in terms of how we're spending. However, uh, revenues, uh, for the municipality, as is the case with revenues for most municipalities, aren't tracking, uh, as they had or as we had budgeted for twenty twenty-one. Uh, our twenty twenty largely due, uh, to the COVID, uh, nineteen pandemic. So obviously, uh, you know, we're, we're not receiving property taxes at quite the rate, uh, that we, we're used to receiving in prior years. And certainly, uh, some of the other act five eleven taxes, earned income tax, uh, business privilege tax, parking revenue, um, uh, and parking fees, uh, fine permits and, and fines, et cetera, are down, uh, because of the COVID and the fact that unemployment, business closures, uh, all of those things have, uh, basically have impacted adversely, uh, the way citizens and, uh, residents and business people and others who come to our community to do business, uh, has, has adversely impacted. So, uh, we didn't meet, uh, and are not meeting those revenue targets that we had, are conservatively, uh, estimated for twenty twenty. Uh, you, when you add on to that, the fact that the, uh, one of the things that municipal council did, uh, that, uh, the governor's office, uh, recommended and for, for most communities, is that count, the council extended the face period, uh, which is the no penalty period, uh, for, um, paying property taxes, uh, and throughout the year. So, folks have up until December thirty-first, uh, this year to pay their property taxes. So we don't really know how property taxes are gonna track and won't know that, uh, completely, uh, until, uh, January, once, once, uh, taxes have been collected in that deadline, uh, for December thirty-first is, has happened. Uh, it's been moving along reasonably well, uh, I think up through, uh, September, and, uh, we'll see how, how things continue to go. Uh, so those, those, um, conditions are really kind of what set the tone for our community and most other communities in terms of how we, how we operate. Given that, uh, we decided, um, I particularly decided in terms of, uh, in proposing a budget for twenty twenty-one to the municipal council, we're just gonna look at core operations and services. Uh, certainly all of the department heads, as they made presentations to me and to the council, uh, had some ideas for continuing, uh, to do some projects and initiatives, expand operations in terms of some new directions, uh, undertake some new capital initiatives that were, uh, going to operate outside of, uh, within our operating budget. Decided to scale back on that because the, with the turn in the economy, with the revenues, uh, being what they are, and with really my belief that these revenue, our revenue situation is not gonna change, um, at least until the, uh, quarter, second quarter, maybe a little bit beyond next year. We don't wanna make any, um, any aggressive or anything other than ultra-conservative moves related, uh, to, uh, service, uh, revenue estimations and, and, and making sure that we, uh, just limit our spending as much as possible, uh, really to core operations and services. So no big initiatives are included in the, in the, uh, twenty twenty-one budget. We did, have advised the council that, uh, our recommendation will be that, uh, at the mid-year point around June, uh, which will be into the second quarter, that we'll come back and look at how things are tracking, and if things are tracking better, uh, and we, we're looking that revenue is going to be, uh, is going to return toward normal levels, uh, we'll ask council to amend the budget and make the adjustments to do some things that we think are essential that need to be added. Uh, however, if revenues are not tracking as well, uh, and still are, are lagging, uh, we might, uh, in that same token, ask council, uh, to make some further, uh, adjustments and, and amend the budget, uh, and, and as I've shared with council, we might have to consider some other cost-cutting measures, uh, in order to, uh, stay, uh, within the budget and, and make sure our ability to operate, uh, effectively is, is not compromised, uh, because we, we, we essentially spent beyond our means. So we'll reassess in twenty twenty-one to see if there's anything, uh, we need to do. We know that there are some, uh, pretty big ticket items on the table in terms of development, uh, in the community. Uh, one, one such development is the county's, uh, uh, justice center project, uh, which, uh, will be requiring a lot of permitting that would be a significant amount of revenue. Uh, if that project continues online, that's one of those things that might give us some sort of relief, um, in, in twenty twenty-one, enable to, that enables us not to, one, go into fund balance and to maybe even make, uh, an upward adjustment, but we'll have to see, uh, if that comes, that comes to fruition. Can you scroll up a little bit more, uh, Kevin? I wanna make sure I missed, okay, so I'm, go back.
Sorry, we all.
No, no, no problem, no problem. It's the age of COVID and technology, okay. So we, we currently, as, uh, we shared with council, at, uh, it, you know, actually about three, four weeks ago, uh, that we, uh, were looking at about a two-point-five million dollar revenue gap, uh, that had to be plugged. And so we looked at multiple strategies to plug that revenue gap. Uh, and again, that revenue gap exists for all the reasons outlined above, we can go to the next slide, Kevin. So, what you look at here is that we're making an estimate of a slight, uh, increase, uh, in, in our, in our, uh, revenues that we're going, uh, we anticipate receiving, about somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred, uh, thousand dollars or so in revenue, an additional revenue that we're gonna receive. Uh, we budgeted this year thirty-three nine-five-eight, uh, thirty-three million nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight, uh, million dollars, uh, thirty-three million nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, uh, dollars to, uh, match what we would, we saw as expenditures, uh, for twenty twenty. Uh, we're not realizing that, we'll see again toward the end of the year whether that's gonna be, uh, realized, uh, or in January at least, and, and if that is actually not the case, uh, depending on how our spending goes, we might have to look at using some fund balance to ultimately balance our revenues, uh, uh, revenue against expenditures for twenty twenty. That, with that said, we, uh, as I said, we're looking at a modest increase, uh, in, in revenues across the various categories. We think this is conservative and realistic, uh, for twenty twenty-one, so, uh, thirty-four-point-six, almost thirty-four-point-seven million dollars as opposed to the thirty-three-point-nine, uh, that we, uh, have, have in budget, uh, budgeted for this year. Next slide, Kevin. So when you compare that to our expenditures, you can begin to see, uh, what, what we're talking about, uh, in terms of that gap. So we're, we're talking about again a thirty-four-point-six, uh, million-dollar revenue, uh, projection for twenty twenty-one, uh, but our expenditure projection for twenty twenty-one is, uh, thirty-seven-point-two, so that's a significant gap. The main reason, uh, for that gap, uh, all of those issues, uh, notwithstanding, one of the larger ticket items in this is that in twenty, this year, we had to, uh, rebid our trash contract. Um, Mascaro, uh, after I was the winning bidder, we actually bid two times trying to get some competition. We got one, uh, one bidder, uh, to compete with Mascaro, and the second time we advertised for bids, uh, Mascaro remained the low bidder, and the next low bidder, uh, over the course of a three-year contract with two option year, the next low bidder, uh, over the course of those, that, that contract would have been three million dollars more than Mascaro's bid. So Mascaro was awarded the contract, uh, but what that means is that, uh, we've now gotta plug in a, a significant difference in terms of, uh, what our contracts, um, about two million dollars in terms of what our, um, our trash fees have been in past years compared to what they, they are gonna be, uh, beginning in, um, twenty twenty-one, uh, and that's not unique to Norristown. I know Norristown happens to be one of the, uh, larger, uh, contracts that Mascaro carries. They carry many across, across the Commonwealth, uh, but ours is one of the larger contracts and, and, uh, essentially ours is also one of the more difficult communities to collect for, largely due, uh, to the narrowness of our street, to the density, uh, narrowness of our streets, the density in the community. We have an exceptional, uh, rate of renters compared to, uh, compared to single-family homeowners. And so in a lot of those rental properties, there are multiple, uh, trash, uh, clients in there. So lots of, uh, lots of challenges, uh, not, uh, including topography, uh, is, is well, so, um, but what we looked at as we surveyed, uh, you know, trash, um, bids around the Commonwealth, there were several municipalities that, that have had to do trash bids in this last year, and I talked to several of them, looked at their bids, uh, thirty, forty-five percent increases in the cost of trash. And largely that is impacted by the fact that China is no longer accepting recycling. And so the cost of recycling is, is, has gone up tremendously. And, uh, I'll honestly say that in, in the instance of, uh, Mascaro, you know, we wanted to make sure as a municipality and councils go, was that we do a, 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 really an aggressive job of trying to keep, uh, the, the city clean. So we've, uh, put in some measures, uh, to have greater accountability for what Mascaro, the work that Mascaro does, as, as well as address some issues that residents, uh, have complained, been complaining about consistently over the, over the years of the existing contract in terms of the service, uh, Mascaro provides. And so this contract, uh, does address it. Next slide, Kevin. So when you look at that and you look at, at the bottom line of what we're talking about, uh, both in revenue and expenditures, uh, while our, while our, while our revenue is only gonna grow, uh, we estimate by two-point-two percent, you see that, uh, when you factor in trash, when you factor in police fire, uh, pensions that we have to pay into in excess of two million dollars a year, you factor in increased, uh, health costs, you factor in, uh, modest, I think, operational costs. Our, our operational costs usually are two to three, three percent, very, very rarely have I seen them go four percent in my seven years, uh, in Norristown. But when you factor in that, uh, you know, we got, uh, nine-point-six, uh, million dollars, nine-point-six percent's worth of base, uh, expenses that we, we have to, uh, we have to cover, uh, which again is that two-point-five million dollar, uh, gap between revenue and expenses that we have to address. Next slide, Kevin. So one of the things we shared with the council was, how do we address that? How, uh, what are the options we have in front of us in doing that? Obviously, one was to look at our fund balance, uh, you know, how much cash do we maintain on hand that we can carry over and, and utilize to plug that gap? That's one of the sources. Another was, how can we cut our operating expenses, uh, to close that gap? Certainly you have to consider, uh, tax increases, which nobody really wants to do, council doesn't, staff doesn't, but it's, 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 it's one of those things you have to look at. And then fourth was a combination of those three things in terms of how, how, uh, we can look at, uh, addressing this. And so as we went back to the drawing board with, uh, with the department heads about this, some issues, I spent a great deal of time with the great team we have, uh, Norm and Kathy and the team that we have in finance, Alicia, fantastic. Uh, we, you know, we, we went back to the drawing board to say, here's some things that, uh, first, first tier level of things that we can look at in operations, uh, to, uh, pull out and, and, and do our part, but then let's look at other options that we have, uh, particularly related to, uh, uh, both property taxes and, uh, fund balance. Next slide. So, first thing we do, did as I shared was look at, uh, operational adjustments that we could, we could, uh, make. We did make some adjustments in terms of, uh, personnel expenses, both, uh, some, uh, positions, uh, adjustments, salary adjustments, uh, and then we looked at reducing overall, where else could we cut, uh, expenses? Some of that is in materials and supplies, some of that is in overtime, some of that is, there's, uh, general, uh, fund, uh, capital expenses. We have, uh, one of the big goals that we had, uh, was to start, uh, establish a fund whereby we would have, start replacing our vehicles in a, in a different sort of way that made more sense, uh, for the municipality and just, and, and began in twenty twenty-one, our goal was to build that process. Before COVID happened, uh, as we discussed this really in twenty twenty-nine and, and started putting the pieces together, I'm sorry, in twenty nineteen, and started putting the pieces together, we did, we had a great year in twenty nineteen. Budget-wise, um, we were really poised for all of those things, uh, to happen and to, to happen in a, in a, in a really not challenging sort of way, uh, until COVID came along. So we looked at these things that we could reasonably pull out of the budget and say, yes, doing these things, we can still operate, uh, and provide core services. Uh, and we, we would again, take this look at the half, at the half-year point, second quarter at some point, to say, how are we doing, uh, is, is any of the, are any of these things that we took out, um, available to be put back in? Or should we be going, looking to go further in terms of reducing operating costs? So you look at what the municipal, the, the operation side of that three-legged, uh, approached in terms of doing this. So we dealt with operations, we've come up with another eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, in, in terms of operational reductions, uh, to address that two-point-five. So we've got about, uh, you know, one-point-six now that we have to deal with, uh, both from the taxing standpoint and, and, and certainly from the fund balance standpoint. Next slide. So first thing we did was like, let's go into our fund balance and, and for those, again, that's cash on hand, uh, that we maintain in terms of being able to keep the operations of government going. The municipal council, a couple of years ago, adopted a, 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 a fund balance policy such that you, we want to make sure that at the minimum, we keep about twenty, uh, twenty percent of our, our annual general fund operating expense, um, in budget and, and that we have that cash on hand, uh, for catastrophes, anything that, uh, that may, may require us to operate without, um, being able to collect revenue at all. And that's an industry standard, uh, that we have set. The municipality has done a good job of having that. We actually have, um, twenty-six percent around, around that number, twenty-six percent, uh, in terms of, uh, fund balance that we currently maintain. So in looking at that, we said, uh, yeah, we can, we can go in for a one-third of what's needed to plug that gap and, and therefore looked at almost eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars of that gap being plugged by fund balance. Again, one of the caveats we have to look at is, uh, we'll know in January, actually sometime January, actually, how we're ended up in, uh, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty. And that might, that will certainly impact whether or not we have to pull more fund balance, uh, to balance the current budget and make sure that our, our revenues equal our expenditures. We haven't rolled for, rolled forward any structural, uh, deficit in terms of how we operate, uh, the government. So we'll be watching that, but for now, we know, uh, that we can take that eight-point-two-five and still stay within our threshold. Uh, one of the other reasons why it's important to stay in that threshold is part of why we wanted to establish a fund balance policy is, uh, what your fund balance, uh, is and having a policy, uh, like that impacts your credit rating, uh, and standard of course, et cetera. And so, uh, one of the things, the municipality has a strong credit rating. We did a great borrowing as a result of that credit rating, which is allowing us, uh, to, and we have cash on hand, uh, which is separate and apart from the, uh, general fund budget, uh, for the renovation, much-needed renovation of city hall. And that was made possible by the fact of, you know, keeping our operating house in order and council establishing the kinds of policies and taking the kinds of steps that they needed to do, uh, for us to be fiscally responsible and fiscally sound at the same time, which is, which is great. So eight-hundred-and-twenty-five, uh, point-nine, uh, thousand, uh, fund, fund balance. And then the other thing we looked at was looking at a millage rate increase. And so that millage rate increase, again, looking to what is, um, uh, a, a mill worth in, in Norristown, uh, really about eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars is, is, uh, is what a mill is worth. Uh, and it fluctuates, but it's been pretty consistent over the last, uh, last few years. And, and so, uh, right now, we're at fifteen, um, mills and, uh, so what we're looking at now is to go up in an additional mill, uh, to, uh, plug the final, um, piece, uh, of the gap that we need to, need, need to deal with. Uh, that millage rate increase would result in about a sixty-dollar, uh, tax increase for the averaged, average household, uh, in, in, in Norristown. And so that's where we are now, and that's the budget we presented to council last night, that these three things, uh, doing these three things would, um, would allow us, uh, to, um, balance the budget and present to them a balanced budget for, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, that is, uh, contingent on, uh, again, us going back and taking a look mid-year. Next, next slide, please.
Excuse me, are you accepting questions now or should we wait till the end?
If, I'm about at the end, so if you can save it, I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to, uh, answer it then.
All right, thank you.
Certainly, so, um, we also looked at, there are some other alternatives to, uh, to this strategy. Obviously, we could use more fund balance, uh, again, and for the reasons I, I said, we won't, don't recommend doing that. One, uh, because it would cause us to have cash flow issues. A lot of governments who have cash flow issues, uh, do tax anticipation notes, which is an essential, uh, uh, beginning of the year borrowing against what they anticipate they're gonna collect in taxes. And then they have to pay that, uh, pay that borrowing off, uh, by the, uh, end of the year, uh, to, to cover, uh, to cover the debt that, that they incurred. We haven't had to do that, certainly, uh, in, in, in the seven years I've been here, and it's not something we recommend doing. Uh, and, and then the other reason you wanna do that is, uh, don't wanna do that is again, uh, when you're trying to protect your credit rating, because we know that there are future borrowings that we're going to want to do, um, and for sure, and then within the next three years as a part of our, uh, five-year strategy, um, we, we want, uh, we wanna limit that. So that's, that's one of the, uh, alternatives we presented to council. Uh, second was, well, we can look at, uh, uh, higher taxes, uh, and that's not what anybody really wants to do. We don't wanna, uh, tax, uh, folks, uh, any further. Uh, and, and council has always, uh, been adverse to that, and we, we certainly support them in, in doing that, which is why we've had, uh, operations in, in check for so long. Uh, and then, uh, thirdly is, uh, you know, if, if council didn't want to go with the proposed right route, one of the other things we could do is looking at, uh, furlough days and, and, uh, of course, days in which, uh, staff would not work nor would they be paid and, and, you know, we look at a day in the operations of the municipality, it's about five hundred, I mean, sorry, about fifty-four thousand dollars. And so we could yield between five-hundred-and-fifty to a million dollars, uh, if, if there were five to ten, I mean, ten to twenty days, uh, that, uh, staff would be furloughed. And, and that certainly would mean, uh, uh, reduction in service for those days, no work. Uh, certainly would be an impact to employee morale, uh, and, and obviously a fiscal challenge for, for, uh, for the folks who, who work for the municipality, constantly their lives are based on the incomes, uh, that they look to expect. And then we expect that that would be labor challenges, because the majority of, of Norristown employees operate under labor agreements, uh, with, with the five various unions, uh, that, uh, I negotiate with on behalf of the council. Uh, but, you know, in situations like this, we're certainly within management rights, uh, for the, for the good of the municipality. So, uh, that was another option that was put on, on the table last night for council. So that was another option that was put on on the table last night for council. And and for them to consider in terms of the advertisement, next slide. So if we do what we're we're proposing to do with three with three strategies that we blended together. You see that what we have is revenue projected to increase by five point six percent. And that that plug will, those three items would give us the needed. Money to plug what our expenditures would be as well. With a slight addition to our fund balance at the end of the year as we had projected for two thousand and twenty previously. Next slide, please. So the next steps in the process is, as I said, this will be the last meeting that we've had. This is a fourth budget meeting, which was an additional one. We're going to now be advertising this budget and it's available through October thirty first. For public review and comment and and certainly our goal is to get a budget in front of council. The budget in front of council for final adoption. Now that we've advertised the budget or once, once it is advertisement. By law, we cannot raise the budget and we cannot raise the proposed tax rate. So council doesn't have that option going forward, once the budget is advertised. We certainly can utilize more cuts or utilize more fund balance. If if council chooses to do so, last night they didn't choose to do anything. They did vote to authorize us to advertise the budget as presented. That budget won't be the official budget until council takes an adoption action. Again, which is targeted for November seventeenth. With that, I'll stop, Norm, Kathy, Alicia, did I need to add anything else or miss anything before we take questions?
No, I think you, I think you hit the 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 points that needed to be mentioned. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, very good. So with that, we certainly take any questions that anyone has about the budget, proposed budget for two thousand and twenty one.
Hi, um, can I, I have actually several questions. My first is, I see that you have a proposed mileage increase of one mil. And you're saying it's an average household increase of sixty dollars. Can you explain how you arrived at that?
Sure, Norm.
Yeah, good question. We get a tax duplicate from the county assessor's office each year. And they break down the the various categories of assessment. In the residential assessment area, we know what the assessed evaluation is for all residential properties. And we know the number of residential properties, so we simply divided the number of properties. Residential properties into the total amount of the the residential assessed evaluation. And it came out to an average of sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, because every time I've seen an increase that's been implemented, and it's always said like an average of sixty dollars. So it's been more than that, which is concerning since during the pandemic is going on. And I know a lot of people are still out of work or looking for work. And I don't see that changing without a vaccine implemented anytime soon. So that's a concern for, I would say, majority of the residents.
And I would add, usually, usually that average is, for instance, our 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 mill. Is is, like I said, is usually around eight hundred eighty thousand dollars in that range. And usually that average is, you know, based on per eight hundred eighty eight thousand dollars of valuation to a house. So it might be slightly higher for some, slightly lower for others, depending on what that valuation of the houses.
So my house is actually valued less than what you're saying, and I still see more than the sixty dollars. So that's why I'm always curious about the math.
Right, right, well, I know I know that when you when you start factoring in trash fees and all of that. And I know they are identified, should be identified separately on that. You know, we do add trash because we collect trash, et cetera, but understood.
So speaking of like the utilities, with this sewer plant sale, how is that going to impact budget?
This budget? Not at all. The sewer, the sewer, the sewer sale doesn't have anything to do with this. There's, it'll probably be at best in in late in the fall. If if, for instance, that the sale is consummated late fall next year, obviously there'll be some revenue. That's collected about that, related to that, that that fifty eight million. Council may make a decision if there's, you know, a dire situation in our revenue situation hasn't changed as a result of the pandemic. But I know what the plan is right now is that council, you know, in the beginning, early part of the year. We're going to start having a series of at least five town hall meetings. And we're hoping that, you know, we'll we'll be a covid available, but I'm not sure. That that we'll be able to do it, but have town hall meetings to get resident input on on all the uses of the funds. Going forward, one of the things that council is proposing and and is one of their main proposals related to this. Is to establish that trust fund for property tax stability. Trust fund to ensure, for instance, the fact that we have to even have one of the legs. Be a property tax increase. If they put amount of money into that trust fund, that that trust would perpetually generate interest. Which would then, and they would then use that interest to plug gaps to hedge against any future tax increases. That's 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 one of the reasons. So it might help toward the end of of next year in terms of plugging some immediate gaps, if that's what council decides to do. But in the long term, the the part of that sewer fund was to be used to to try to ameliorate and lessen the impact. Of tax increases on residents going forward. And I know, like I said, I know the program works, I know colleagues who who have it. A very close colleague in 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 one of the towns has it, they've they've had theirs in place for twenty plus years now. And if in the fund, you know, it's only the interest and the way you set them up. You know, council, it makes it extremely difficult for any council to come in and try to raid the fund. So it, but that is what this council's vision is, is that that fund would be in place to hedge against having to do tax increases.
That's interesting, because I would think the sewer sale would just kind of harm residents in a different way by having to pay. Higher sewer fees, since it's no longer a public utility, but I'll save that for the council. My next question is, how do you account for revenue in the fines and? Is there a quota that, I guess, parking enforcement is supposed to meet? Or how do you come to those numbers? How do you know you're going to issue so many parking violations?
Right, and it's not really quota based, it's usually, it's basically basically based on experience. What's the best, what's the experience been? And we look, you know, we look now, we have a five year average we look at in terms of how we evaluate the budget. What's what's the revenue been over the last five years? And if it's tracking similarly, that's what it is. So there's there's not a quota in involved in it at all. I think in most, most of the cases, whether it be fees, I know even in in terms of fines for like code enforcement, for instance. You know, what we're trying to get is compliance, and if you get compliance, you know, you don't, you don't have to issue fines and that, and that's the goal. But there's, there's, there's no quota at all.
Because I just happened to notice that for snow citations, it's increasing nine hundred percent when I don't even know if you can predict the snow. To fall enough to get five hundred, five thousand dollars out of it.
Understood, and and I think like, you know, the good news for us between the last couple of years. Obviously, the 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 weather has been very, very cooperative, but you don't know when, for instance, you you have like. Few years ago, a thirty two incher that came. So we we just have to, we maintain just, obviously, and when you talk about stuff like that, out of the abundance, abundance of of caution. We're gonna, we're gonna contract for the supplies that we need anticipating a worst case scenario.
Okay, so when you talked about operations and cutting things, did you freeze, I guess, salaries for the year? I know the company I worked for, when we were experiencing issues with the pandemic, instead of releasing anyone. They just kind of decreased our salaries for a little bit, so everyone could still stay employed. Is that something you guys considered or are doing?
Well, one of the challenges in in managing local government in Pennsylvania is is the fact that you have labor agreements. And and you agree to what salaries are going to be for X number of years of of the of the labor agreement. And so, you know, wages are the things that would be grieved. The great majority of our employees are 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 represented employees. So, no, I mean, this is 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 just that. And but the salary increases have typically been very, very modest. But, you know, because because we have labor, we we have, we honor those agreements.
With regard to, I guess, supplies for PPE and people in person. Are we looking at having people work from home to, I guess, minimize cost for PPE and people in the building? Or are we just kind of covering PP and expecting everyone to return to work as normal?
Well, we we did and and still do that. I mean, there are few people now who are still in the in the operations who are working remotely. But for the for the most part, in terms of a service delivery operation like a local government. That there's, there's just so much, you know, and that's even unlike county government, because it's not direct service. As direct services as local government is, there's only so much you can do from home. You you can't, you know, take all of the files that you would have like in the finance department or in my office or whatever. And if and effectively do that from home. A lot of the PPE that we we got this year was, you know, we we did get some funds. Made available to us from the state and to to purchase some supplies. And so we've we've been operating that way. But, you know, again, when you look at the entirety of a budget and and the fact that there were a lot of things because of covid. We weren't able to do, the cost of what we needed to do for masks, et cetera, was was kind of nominal. In terms of that, which is, you know, a large part of why, you know, we've stayed well within what our budget is.
Okay, is there anything, I guess, within the budget that could be postponed until better economic times that haven't been considered? Or is it more, everything has been considered, this is the best we can do?
Yeah, we're at that point now, and I and I'll I'll tell you, seven years ago, when I came in, you know, we started a a process. Of looking at where redundancy was in the organization, why are two departments doing this or that? And why are we even doing this this kind of thing? And we've we spent a great deal of time over these years really reducing our operating costs. And so, like I've said, other than the cost of, let's say, paper going up. Or the cost of gasoline going up, you know, we have to adjust for what it costs to buy supplies, et cetera. But we took out, for instance, one of the things, as I as I mentioned. We wanted to be more aggressive. We started a couple of years ago, a a program to start paving, you know, public alleys. Because folks, the trash company, folks were, you know, alleys are horrible, and a lot of them still are. And we were going to be more aggressive in doing that this year. And so we said, okay, let's go back, basic services, we still want to do more, do some alleys, because we want, we had a multi year program to. To start to get them all done. Well, let's slow that down, let's not try to be as aggressive this year. So we we cut down on the amount of supplies that we do that. We we looked at with that, we looked at overtime, and you know, the majority of overtime in in Norristown is policing fire. And and for a variety of reasons, a significant amount in in both departments. You know, we've asked, and the chiefs have done a good job over the years of trying to do it. I I was proud, for instance, that that a police chief actually brought it down this this year. And and so we didn't budget for as much in overtime. Now, will that pan out? I mean, covid might rack us seriously and and cause it, cause it to, you know, we're thankful that it hasn't. But it 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 might, so we've looked at in terms of what we buy, how we buy, what we do in terms of providing services. We've, we've cut it down, and it's really now at that point of, do you want to wait, do you want to lay people off? And and or do you want to eliminate some services that that residents have 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 become used to? Do you want to stop patching potholes? Do do you want to stop inspecting properties, you know, doing rental inspections, all of those things? And we have to weigh that against the council's prime responsibility. You know, preparing for the, you know, taking care of public welfare and safety. So what are those core core services to do that? What are the things that we need to do operationally to support those core services? And that's really, really where we are. So we're we're just, really, when you, when you take out the trash issue that that we didn't really have a choice for. In terms of it costs what it costs to have trash collected, and that was a significant increase. I mean, we we pretty much, over the course of of the last six, seven years, have been flat in our operational cost. And and we've held off on a lot of things this year without, as a result of that. We, I think I mentioned earlier, we were going to start a fleet, a fleet replacement program. That was a part of the budget this year, we cut, we cut that out, and that's something we can wait on. There were some vehicles that need to be replaced, and equipment that needed to be replaced. That was a part of our, you know, leasing, operating budget plan. Nope, we just froze all of that, because we just need to not spend if we absolutely don't have to do it. And so we spent a good deal of time looking at that.
Okay, I have one last question, it's about the trash. So how does that impact, I know it's impacting the budget and caused the kind of the shortfall or the gap, as you called it. How is that translating down to the average Norristonians?
I think, Norm, if you have the numbers, I think it was, it it really is is going to be about, what? You know the amount of the increase for for trash? I mean, I think it was two.
We have that figure, Kathy, do you have it at hand?
Yes, it's going to, from two seventy four to four twenty four, increase of a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Okay. So I guess my other kind of question following up on this is, so if it's that's increasing us, how do we still kind of have like a gap? I guess that's the part I'm not following.
How do we have a what?
The gap in the budget, like with the increase in the trash, it's it's kind of trickling down to the residents. And businesses and whoever, you know, has trash, which is everyone, how is that causing a greater deficit?
Well, sure, that's a great question. Here's, here's the deal. Everything that operates a local government is paid primarily by the residents of that local government. So if 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 we have, for instance, with the trash specifically. While we aren't the trash company, as opposed to how other communities might do it. In terms of residents, you know, paying for their own trash collection and the municipality not being involved in it. We actually front. we actually front residents' trash bills and then charge it back through them as an add-on in your tax bill. So we have to account, even though it's a pass-through for us, we have to account for that revenue because we're spending it. And so when it's an additional, you know, $150, which, you know, that adds to, you know, what the cost and the expense it is to operate as a government and provide all of the services that residents need.
So you're paying our trash bill upfront? Like, is it, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, do we not have payment terms with the trash company to kind of, I guess, feed you guys and instead of just paying upfront for us all the time?
We get a bill every month from the trash company for collection. And the totality of that bill per resident, per business that we have to collect for, that comes to you on a tax bill saying, this is how much trash, this is how much your trash bill is. And it is a monthly payment, but we have to account for that in terms of having the revenue to do that.
Okay, and I guess just from a business perspective, it doesn't seem like a good deal for payment terms.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the challenge with it is this and it's particularly challenging, you know, in a dense community like Norristown. Let's say, and, you know, as a council policy, I'm sure, years before you were here, years before I was here, certainly, a council made a decision that they were going to, the city was going to be responsible to make sure the city stayed clean for healthy reason. The city was going to be responsible for making sure that there was trash collection, rather than leave it in the hands of individuals to pay. Because what if people didn't pay their bill, trash bill? And as dense as we are, what would that look like from a safety and health standpoint? Pretty quickly, it would look very, very bad. It would be very, very bad. And so that was the decision. I mean, if we weren't the pass-through, you know, that's three-plus million dollars a year. We don't have to add to our budget, but it is three-plus million dollars a year that collectively whoever's getting their trash collected has to pay to Mascara directly.
Okay, all right. I guess maybe I just was thinking in the future, there would be a different way. So it's not something where, like, you guys have to pay it upfront and then also make it up kind of in a way.
Yeah, well, you know, we just, again, we have to ensure, that's council's primary charge, health and safety and certainly trash collection falls in that health and safety mandate that local government has. So, and I think in this instance, it is best. And when you have a community that, you know, has a transient population too and as many absentee owners as are in Norristown, it does make sense to ensure that trash is going to be collected. And, but, you know, the contract we have with Mascara, especially the new one, that got written, you know, they've got to do their due diligence. We put in some additional penalties, et cetera. But they'll get 1/12 of that per month, provided they do it according to the contract we've agreed upon.
Okay, so now I have a new question. How does, I guess, the delinquent taxes impact the budget? So that, I guess, like if you don't get those taxes, delinquent or otherwise, doesn't that negatively impact that we now owe, I guess, more money because it's not there when we expected it?
Well, the property owner continues to owe the money, but it certainly impacts our cash flow, our cash on hand and it impacts every other property owner in terms of, well, we've got to, you know, again, we've got to balance the budget, we've got to balance the books and we have to use fund balance to do so. I think the good news for us, what's it been, about 92% norm in terms of collection rate in Norristown? So it's not as high as it is in other places. But it does, if you budget that you're going to get $1,000 and you get less than $1,000, you've got to find a way to make it up, yes.
Okay, well, I appreciate your patience with my question.
Oh, absolutely. That's what we're here for tonight.
All right, well, I guess then the budget, is it the one that was posted? That the first page is like attachment to ordinance number 20-16? Is that the budget, the general fund budget, kind of what I guess we're looking at and if the council approves it?
Is that the ordinance number? I can't remember what the ordinance number is, but if it hasn't gone up, it's getting ready to go up.
So the one that's online isn't the one that I should be looking at?
Say that again?
There's a document already posted online?
If they posted it today, yeah, if they posted it today from last night, that's the one.
Okay.
Yes.
So then the next step is that the council, I guess, votes on it after everyone puts in their comments?
Yes, and so, and anybody can make comments, certainly up until the night council adopts a budget. And so, which, you know, which we're targeting, it'd be November 17th.
Okay. I will forward to seeing, I guess, more information from the council then.
Absolutely. And if you have any more questions for us, you know, certainly shoot them to our PIO and we'll get them answered.
All right, thank you so much.
You're certainly welcome.
Have a good evening.
You do the same, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Are there any more questions? All right. Well, if there are no more questions, we can declare that this budget. Hello?
Oh, sorry about that.
Oh, did you have a question?
Just one, she asked, just about everything, I was wondering. So as far as the parking permits, I see that there's a slight decrease in majority of those for the revenue. What, I guess, what would be the reason for that?
Essentially because of COVID, you know, most of our parking revenue is from meters downtown. And because nobody was working, nobody was using the meters. And so that was definitely a decrease in that. We didn't get as much revenue as we normally do through the normal course of business for even, you know, fines associated with illegal parking or meters expiring, et cetera. And so that's why the revenue declined. And again, my conservative look at 2021 is that I don't expect January, February, March or April that life will be back to normal from the COVID situation. So there probably will still be a lot of remote work and there will be businesses that are operating at less than full capacity.
Okay, makes sense. Only one more thing, it's just looked really weird to me, mostly because I'm not sure what it is. What is a parking meter bag and how did that go from 100,000 to 40,000 proposed dollars of revenue?
And that's a great question. Parking meter bags are those bags when people want to reserve parking in the municipality. I'll give you a real vivid example. So a couple of years ago, when Cosby trial happened, every newspaper organization, it looks like, certainly in the region and from around this area of the country, wanted to park in downtown Norristown and wanted to reserve parking spaces in order that they could cover the trial. And we charge for those, if we can't have turnover at the meeting, at a meter, you have to pay for us to give you those spaces. And again, because of the decline in business in our downtown and in other areas of town that would normally use those meters, we are not projecting that that expense is going to come back rapidly in 2020.
Okay. All right. I believe that was it for me.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I think Mr. McMahon, do you have any questions? Okay. All right, if he does not, then what we will do is thank you all for attending. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate your questions. If you have more, please reach out to us, pio@norristown.org and we'll be happy to get those questions answered. Thank you very much for your attendance. You all have a great evening and I declare this public hearing closed.